So we will go ahead and get started. Good morning, everyone. Officially, it's 10:02. Good morning. We will go ahead and get started with our town hall meeting that's focused on nonprofits. Again, the title is the COVID-19 Impact Nonprofit Town Hall Meeting. My name is Felina Martin, the Executive Director with the Institute for Nonprofit Innovation and Excellence. It is my honor and privilege to serve in this role to represent nonprofits within our community. We are a tight-knit, proud community that's very excited and passionate about our mission to serve the community. But before I get started, because this is a very important subject and it's a very trying time for our entire community as well as our country, I want to know how many Gator fans do we have participating this morning? And do you think we are going to have the Gators? Or do you think we'll have the Seminoles win this fall? So you're on mute, thank God, or this would be blown up the mics. But if you want to, please feel free to put your vote in the comment section. Who's going to take it home this fall? The Gators or the Knowles? All right? So can't wait for football season. Really looking forward to that. But let's go ahead and formally get started with introducing Mayor Daley. He is obviously a very busy man, but we are grateful that he's taken the time to join us this morning. Our schedule is going to be very simple, starting off with the mayor providing us with some insight as to what's going on in terms of our leadership. Then we'll transition into our panel discussion, and then we will round up with Q and A towards the end. But let's start off with introducing Mayor Daley. Good morning, Mayor. Thank you again for joining us.
Can you hear me all right? Am I coming through?
Yes, yes. And we can see you and hear you. Thank you.
Good. Well, appreciate everybody participating this morning, and I'm sorry I can't stay on for the entire video session. I'm going to have to jump off and jump on a call with the medical community. But nonetheless, I did want to come and first of all, say thank you. These are unprecedented times. This is a little crazy in our community, in our state, in the nation, and in the world, and everybody's doing their part. I cannot stress enough. Folks, stay at home if you can, all right? Look, we all have missions that we have to do. There's things that we have to get out of the house to do. Many of y'all play a vital role in this community, whether it's feeding people, sheltering people, medical, whatever it may be. If you are not participating in those vital missions, please stay home. I cannot stress it enough. If you are out and about, be smart, be safe. Social distancing, personal hygiene. Look, you could have COVID-19 and not even be symptomatic and pass it on to somebody that it could be a very serious situation. I want to remind you that at the beginning of March, the United States of America had less than 100 confirmed cases of COVID-19. One month later, here we are with 244,000 cases in one month across the country, just in our community alone. Last Thursday, we had nine confirmed cases. One week later, we now have 35 confirmed cases. And I am concerned that getting in this call, we need to take this seriously, and you have to help us message. Folks, we're under a national state of emergency, a state-declared state of emergency, a locally declared state of emergency, and we are under a state stay-at-home order. In fact, if you think about it... There we go. If you think about it, over 80% of the entire country is under some type of a stay-at-home order. Got to stick together. We have to be smart. Look, there's two main things that are going to play a significant role in flattening the curve of the spread of COVID-19 in our community. Number one is for us to be vigilant and be prepared. Stay at home if you can. Be smart if you're out and about. And quite frankly, number two is the weather. You know, as it warms up, I have been told by the medical community that helps us in this situation. So that's just kind of an overview of where we are. It changes on an hourly basis. It changes on a daily basis. If you know of somebody that is not feeling well, they need to call their healthcare provider immediately. If they pass the over-the-phone screening, they will be sent to the Northwood Center, which has been a huge success for our data collection. From there, they will be tested, and we will wait to get the results. Our goal right now is to stop the spread of COVID-19 in our community. Got a lot of hotbeds around us, Jacksonville, South Georgia, you know, Central and South Florida. So it's very important that we stay vigilant on what's going on. Specifically in our community, I know that you have been following and very proud of Chairman Brian Deluge of the County Commission during a state of emergency for putting in the local stay-at-home order with a curfew. That has been lifted in light of what the governor did this week and has been replaced by the statewide order. But our community, we've been in constant communication, the city, the county, the school board, the medical community, the university community, the law enforcement community, and we're all on the same page and have been preparing for quite some time. So we do have a couple of items of relief specifically for small business. As you know, Intergovernmental Agency passed a relief measure just last week, the Cedar message, Cedar, excuse me, the Cedar Opportunity for Small Businesses. It is a grant program, and depending on the size of your business allows you to be able to move forward and apply for a grant. We have to date handed out 300, well, we have 365 applications for more than $750,000. That has become a bridge to all other state and federal programs that are available as well. For nonprofits, I am keenly interested in doing a similar program on the local level for nonprofits. We have not gotten to the point to where it has passed locally, but we will continue our efforts for the nonprofit community. I am here to tell you, though, that we do have the Paycheck Protection Program, which I know that many of you are familiar with, that as nonprofits you do qualify for, I would encourage you that if you are interested in the Paycheck Protection Program, to either call the FAMU Small Business Development Center or the Office of Economic Vitality. I'll give those numbers right now. FSU Small Business Development Center is 850-599-3407. Office of Economic Vitality is 850-219-1069. In closing, there's been a lot of questions about the governor's executive orders of exactly what is an essential or a nonessential business activity. Basically, what shut down, what isn't shut down. Obviously, the essentials, grocery stores, gas stations, banks, from a business standpoint, they are all open. Healthcare community, they're open. Star Metro, open. Transportation, open. There's a complete list of what is open and what is not open on the state of Florida. I think it's Department of Emergency Management has a complete list. Churches have a religious exemption as well, although you have heard us loud and clear strongly suggest that the faith-based community, again, stay away from crowds of 10 or more, and let's use creative methods to be able to meet up. But I want to thank you all for everything you're doing. I really do. Many of y'all play a very significant impact, not only in our economy, but during these times of stress, providing valuable services. It is not lost on me or the city or the county, and I really appreciate everything you're doing. I do have time for one or two questions if you want to do that, and then I will need to log off so that I can on this call with the medical community.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Daley. And we do have a question that has come in from Kim Ross with Rethink Energy Florida. So Rebecca, you don't mind, please ask the mayor that question on behalf of Kim Ross.
So Kim Ross's question is, it looks like that was only for private nonprofits and not public charities. Is your understanding different?
Are you referring to the Paycheck Protection Program?
No, actually, I'm referring to the, yes, I am referring to the Paycheck Protection Program. Sorry, it's very confusing.
Kim, I'll be honest with you, I am not an expert in that field, and I am concentrating on other aspects of what's going on right now. So for clarification, again, I would encourage you to call either the FAMU, I'm sorry, I don't have an answer right now. I would encourage you to call the FAMU Small Business Development Office or the Office of Economic Vitality. We have done a great job cross-training OEV on all levels of assistance, federal all the way down, so that they can answer these questions. But yeah, that's pretty technical, and that's outside of my wheelhouse, and I'm sorry. Great question, though.
Thanks. Mayor Daley, can you tell us what we can do as a sector to really advocate towards our public officials providing some funding to support the nonprofit sector? I know that you already were making that attempt. What can we do as a sector to move that forward?
I would stay in constant communication with your elected officials and let them know what the needs are out there and what you're feeling on the ground. One of the greatest ways to be able to respond in real time is the anecdotal information. But again, another thing that you can do to really help us out during this time is I need you to scale back your missions to bare-bone personnel operations as much as possible when you're out in the field. You know, one thing that's unique about this community is that we are a very loving and giving community, especially during hurricanes, when a disaster hits, a natural physical disaster hits, our first response is always roll up our sleeves, get out, and volunteer. This is one of those situations where that can be extremely dangerous. If we can appropriately accomplish the mission of handing out food with a staff of 10 instead of a volunteer corps of 200, that's what we need to be concentrating on. We need to practice the social distancing. We need to practice personal hygiene. We need people to stay home as much as they possibly can, while at the same time, I understand you got to have the right personnel to meet the needs of the mission of your organization. But stay in touch with your local elected officials. Let them know what's going on. Let them know where the gaps are and how we can be of assistance.
It looks like we have a question from Tracy Parker. The Office of Economic Vitality grants states on their website specifically for-profit under eligibility. Do nonprofits qualify?
No. So when we met during the Intergovernmental Agency meeting, the first motion that went through was for $1 million specifically for small businesses in our community to apply for the grant. The idea was is that part of the application was tied specifically to applying for other federal and state grants. As you understand in the nonprofit community, for every dollar spent, if we could draw down more state and federal dollars, that would be great as well. But to directly answer the question, no, it was specifically for just small businesses. I did make a motion for $1 million into a program that would be similar for the nonprofit community and for individuals that have lost their jobs. I did not quite have the support at the last meeting, but we'll continue talking about it. And I know that all my colleagues at the city and the county are concerned about the nonprofit community in our community and to see what we can do moving forward. But right now, that program for nonprofits has not been created. It's only been created for the small business community.
We have a question from Kelly Adi. What is the plan to help feed the citizens? It's getting dire. Second Harvest is no longer receiving retail donations, which is tens of thousands of pounds of food. 25% of our families cannot get to the feeding sites. Is there any plan that you know of to be creative and how to get food to everyone?
Well, Kelly, that's a great question, because we don't operate under normal circumstances right now. We are under a declared state of emergency on the local level, which means that the Emergency Operations Center has been activated under the leadership of Kevin Peters. From a legal standpoint, the county and the chairman of the County Commission take the role of oversight of the EOC along with the sheriff. So when we get into these situations of a state of emergency, the plan is formulated through the EOC and all of our community partners, especially when it gets dire, as you have mentioned. So the short answer is, I don't have that plan right in front of me, but I do know that we are working on plans, not only to feed the population, but the homeless population in general. Those are experiencing homelessness. I know that the continuum of care is working around the clock right now to formulate their own plan. In each one of your sectors, I know that you are working with your community partners to make sure that the emergency plans are in place to be able to move forward. So yes, during a state of emergency, I know that they're working really hard.
We don't have any questions coming through right now, Mayor.
Great. I am going to go ahead and jump off. I do apologize. Like I said, I need to jump on with the medical community. Folks, I love you. I love what you're doing. Stay safe. We are Tallahassee strong. We are going to make it through, but we got to be in for the long call. So be good out there and be smart and be safe. Take care.
Thank you, Mayor Daley. We appreciate your time. Stay safe as well.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. Thank you for everyone for asking those questions. And as you heard Mayor Daley say, we are really going to have to round up and make sure we share our stories with our local officials. But I'm going to go ahead and transition into our panelists. And joining us this morning, I'm very excited about who we have represented so that they can be a part of sharing their story. And we have with us Tim Center, CEO with the Capital Area Community Action Agency. Along with Tim, we have Kathleen Sapar with the Council on Cultural and Arts, also known as COCA, Executive Director. And then we have joining us Jim McShane, CEO of Career Source Capital Region. And then rounding up the team this morning is Meg Baldwin, Executive Director of Refuge House. Welcome all of you to the panel.
Thank you.
And so as we move forward, the intention is for you to share your story and give your perspective of what's going on with your particular organization. And then at the end, we'll answer, we'll open it up for questions and answers so we can have some open dialogue as a sector and be able to address maybe concerns that we mutually have. Again, as I stated, when we start at the call, this call is being recorded, and we are very fortunate that we do have some media representation that can also help to share our story as well, too. I will apologize in advance. It just apparently happens to be Lawn Care Day. Who knew at 10 o'clock that it would be Lawn Care Day? So I'm sure a lot of you are experiencing a lot of fun things that are happening like this as well, too, but I'll apologize in advance if you happen to hear that background noise. But let's get started with our question, which is open to all of our panelists. And the first one is, of course, revolving around COVID-19 and impact. But in a recent survey that any conducted, 65% of nonprofits have canceled services. 96% of them canceled events, but 65% have to cancel services that they offer to those in need. What is the impact of COVID-19 on your particular service delivery? And we can start off with maybe Tim Center, if you would like to do that. Or maybe not. How about we...
You're here, okay. You get to him. I'd unmute myself, and I'm trying to respond to some emails for folks to have information about the PPP. So if you want to, I'll end up sending this to Felina as well, and she can then forward it on from different accounting firms and banks that we've used. And so that will be a good resource. So Community Action is a $9 million organization serving eight counties. We have staff who help low-income families pay their utility bill, provide weatherization services in people's homes, making them more energy efficient. We provide Head Start services for more than 40 families in three different counties, including Leon. And we also have a Getting Ahead Program that works to get people off of public assistance. And everything that we're doing right now is currently closed. We are closed to client contact directly in terms of our offices, and that's been the biggest impact in terms of this entire Safer at Home initiative that we've been implementing for a while. In a joking manner, I will tell you that we were trying to get ahead of this for several months by forcing all of our staff to hug every single client just to build up immunity, but that really didn't work out. So hopefully, you got a good chuckle out of that. We did not really hug our clients. We do love them, though, and we are making new services available by being able to accept applications for services online. And that's a new initiative, and we've put our links to those online resources on our Facebook, social media pages, and our website. And we're also been working with our utility providers, all of whom, except for Talquin Electric, have deferred payments for 60 days and have eliminated any, I think, late fee charges as well. Of course, we've seen the most recent relief executive order from the governor alleviating the issue of evictions, and which is going to be very helpful, I think, for folks who are worried about stable housing and making their rent payments. And then if there's a shining lining at the end of this whole thing, with the COVID-19 Congressional Relief Act that was passed a couple weeks ago, and the $2 trillion package includes $1 billion, it's going to be going to community action agencies across the country. We're one of 1,000. And so we would anticipate that we'll be getting those COVID-19 stimulus dollars probably in about 30 to 60 days. Those dollars will enable us to actually expand our services and serve more clients as we would anticipate the eligible population to receive our services may grow due to unemployment. And so we will be hiring, we'll be expanding our services when those dollars become available to us. And that is a quick overview of where we stand right now. Oh, and Head Start is closed. We're following the school calendar there, but all of our teachers have been maintaining contact with our families via phone call, via text messaging, and online resources that we're putting on Facebook. And we have about 75% of our families have indicated through a survey that they do have internet access. So we're trying to help them become, as we've always kind of has our motto, that parents are their children's first teachers. We know that a lot of teachers, a lot of parents are probably struggling with that role right now, and we're trying to provide as much relief as we can remotely. So thank you.
We have a question from Terri Sue. Tim, did you hear correctly that Talquin has not deferred payments at the current time?
Currently, Talquin Electric, which is committed to its customers, who are their shareholders, has created a process where they have not necessarily adopted that policy that other utilities have, whether they be municipals or investor-owned utilities. We manage for Talquin a fund called TAP. That TAP fund is very helpful in helping clients, and we've been actually on a, because social services are an essential service under the executive order, we have on occasion working on a case-by-case basis with Talquin customers that Talquin refers to us. We work with them individually to make sure that their payments are working. Talquin is very conscientious about working with all of their customers and creating payment plans or whatever is going to work best for them, but they have not done the deferment that other utility providers have taken.
As we move to Kathleen, can you answer that question as well as what impact has COVID-19 had on you being able to deliver services?
Absolutely. I'm going to share. COCA comes from Culture and Arts, it's a local arts agency for the city of Tallahassee and the county. So we do have nonprofits in our clientele and in addition to also some for-profits and some, especially a lot of individuals. So it's kind of a, it's interconnected. But specifically for nonprofits, we have nonprofits that have spaces and that don't. So we experience the same kind of cancellation rate, anywhere from 95% to 98% within that first week. And the industry, though, it's diverse, is what I've just described. Events really link it together. So it was a sudden kind of crash in a sense of, you know, of events being canceled. And so what we've seen, COCA was able to pivot pretty quickly, and so we put a lot of our services right away online. 100%, we were an office that went 100% digital right away, and we included a lot of, we were continually communicating through social media, emails, and other online kind of services. So what we've seen within the industry itself is this same kind of pivot. So if you go to tallahasseearts.org, what you'll see is COCA created an online events page. And so you can go to that page, and you can see locally who has been able to pivot their services online. And this includes online concerts, lessons, classroom experiences, all sorts of services that the arts community has been able to put online. This also includes some of the cultural institutions that we have here, for example, like Lemoine or Tallahassee Museum. They've been able to actually put some of their programming online, and that's, they've been needing to do some of that to also stay connected to the community. And so we've been able to help out with just making sure that the word gets out about that. We also have had some events that have been able to pivot and go online right away. For example, at Railroad Square, they're trying their very first virtual First Friday. So there's some things like that that have actually been able to happen within the arts and culture community that have been an immediate pivot and been able to also service our community in ways where all of a sudden, at stay-at-home, what is there not only to do, but what kind of resources do we need for parents that are at home, for students, and for kids that need activities to happen, for caregivers? So we also have curriculum that we've been able to put online. So if you go to tallahasseearts.org, you kind of see the explosion of resources that are actually on that page now to help service our community. We've also seen that there's been a pivot recently in the last few days, especially to additional guidance and advice and resources that are needed. For example, the CARES Act that was just passed last week on Friday, I believe, this week has really been about how can CARES help nonprofit organizations. It's more than that. There's also small businesses and especially independent artists and independent businesses can also, can profit from that. But nonprofits in particular, through the National Endowment for the Arts and through some of these PPP programs and some of the small business initiatives, can actually tap into those programs. So today, yesterday and today in our resources page, we have some additional information about that. Also, COCA has two emails going out, one on Mondays and one on Thursdays. Monday is really focused on events and activities. Thursday is really on resources. And so we're continuing to populate those two newsletters so that you can get as much information as possible about what to do, where to go, and we also use those responses from those newsletters to try to look at what else do we need to do in this community in order to make sure that it's being serviced.
Great. Thank you, Kathleen. I want to switch over to Jim McShane. I know you're staying busy, Jim, but can you please share with us how this is impacting people finding employment and losing jobs and the whole nine yards? I know you're heavily on the ground with that. So COVID-19, how is it impacting the service that you're able to offer?
So thank you for this opportunity to sharing with everybody. Yesterday, the governor had the executive order 2093 that he put out, basically saying that because DEO is overwhelmed with people trying to apply for unemployment insurance, that there will be a paper product or a paper product coming out soon from DEO, hopefully today, that will allow people to apply. And what all 24 of us workforce boards in the state plan on doing is probably, more than anything, putting it on our website, making sure it's fillable. So we're looking at JotForm or PDF file fill-in type of thing, make it as easy for people to be able to utilize. Hopefully, DEO will actually think of this and put this in this form, but we're not hearing that at this point. And our goal is really to help people. So we're also posting a job board every day. We are not just looking at Employ Florida. We're looking in Indeed, we're looking in all the other job postings in the region. And we are actually talking with OEV at this point on building a regional board, because it's not just our region. We're all, that whole area, the whole job, what we call a labor shed is, including South Georgia, including borders on either side of us, Franklin County and Liberty County, et cetera. So we're going to be looking at how we put something together next week that will help broaden that. There are jobs available at this point. When people do call us, we are close to the public at our career centers. However, we are taking calls. Many of the DEO calls are rolling into us. We are set up, and each of our career centers have its own phone number now so that people can call into their local career center in Capson, Leon, or Waculla. In doing that, we also have up to four rollover numbers so that as much as possible, we are answering those calls. They're not going into a voicemail. We're assisting people, letting them know that we do not have the authority under DEO in order to help them with their needs on the UI site, which many of them are having to reset their PIN numbers. You might have read that. We can't do it. We wish we could, but we cannot. So we are working with DEO right now. They're going to be training some of our staff and possibly giving us the authority to do some of this, which we've all offered. All 24 of the workforce boards have offered to be helpful in any way that we can. But when we do talk to them on the phone, we're basically consoling them. Many of them are angry. Can't blame them when you have to wait five hours to get into your UI. But at the same time, I think most people do realize that this is an unusual circumstance. The state got hit with... The state got hit with hundreds of thousands of applications, basically, and all at one time within a two-week period, and it's overwhelming their system. Same thing happened in New York, same thing has happened in other states too. So we're helping them understand that while we will assist them in any way we can on the unemployment insurance, that our staff is there in order to help them with job search and that we do have jobs available right now. And we will help them identify what jobs they might be able to go for and get employed by. So there are businesses that are looking for more people and we're assisting. And we're not just sticking to Employ Florida, which is what we normally have to do. We don't get credit if they're not in Employ Florida. But at this point, we're talking with the state about wavering, waving at as far as our performance goes and letting us just assist people as best we can, giving them the consolation of that. They are talking, that's one thing that I heard from staff is that, you know, actually, somebody answered the phone. This is a real person, that's what they asked some of my staff. Yes, we are, and we're here to help. We will, we are essential, and so we will continue to be able to do what we need to do in order to serve the community.
Right, I want to turn it over to Meg. For Meg, if you don't mind rounding up that particular question again, is how is COVID-19 impacting the service delivery for the Refuge House?
Sure, thanks. And along with the other folks who've spoken, I want to thank everyone and Felina and Annie for this opportunity to come together. You know, for those of us who provide human services, I think all of us know that there's no one-size-fits-all kind of service that, or effect that the virus will be having on the people that our mission is specifically aimed to support. But we do know that for vulnerable people, when certain situations like this arise, it often hits hardest on those folks who are experiencing other stresses in their lives. And those are our people. I think I've been particularly concerned, of course, about survivors of domestic violence and sexual assault, which is of course the core mission for Refuge House. When you think about it, domestic violence and sexual assault are really a product of a perpetrator having physical access to a victim and out of the sight of others and the isolation of a victim from others who might support her. And when you think about it, the stay-at-home orders produces exactly that circumstance for all of us and with particularly severe impact on those who are experiencing domestic violence or at risk of sexual assault. Perpetrators have hours and hours and hours of contact with victims. Victims have no privacy to reach out for assistance and are exposed to risks of injury and harm over most of their day. Further, the fact that children are more present in the home created an added level of concern for victims. When a survivor chooses to, under normal circumstances, to reach out to Refuge House on our hotline, for example, she'll typically find a moment in her day when she's alone, when the perpetrator may have gone to work or, you know, gone out to hang out with friends. And also when her children aren't present because survivors don't want to call and talk about these very frightening circumstances that she may be facing in front of her children. So again, now we've got a situation where abuser and victim are locked together at home, surrounded by kids, and consequently, the risk of harm to her and her access to services are severely constrained. We saw that right away in our hotline services. We typically provide, we typically receive between 30, 40, sometimes more than 40 calls on a Monday after the weekend. And when you think about it, of course, that's the day when abuser has probably gone to work, kids are back off, are back off to school after the weekend, and the survivor just has that moment of privacy and security to be able to call us. And again, usually that's our, Monday's our highest call day, 30, 40, 45 calls on that day. On the, a week ago Monday, we received less than five calls on our hotline. And at that, right away, that moment, we knew that we were in trouble and needed to quickly be thinking about how best to adapt access to our services to these very, very different and dangerous circumstances, again, for victims of domestic violence and sexual assault. So we've also been concerned about the transition of our usually face-to-face counseling services and advocacy services to a phone, a phone-based access system. We've already had circumstances where we're in the middle of a counseling session with a survivor. The abuser walks in the room at home, picks up the phone and yells at us over on the other end of the line and cuts the communication. So these, again, these safety concerns about being able to provide services remotely are ones we're trying to tackle. Our emergency shelter services are continuing pretty much as per, we did rearrange our emergency shelter interior to meet the physical space recommendations from the CDC of six feet between beds. That did reduce our shelter capacity by about 20%, which is of course significant. But we're confident that we've got, we have protocols in place to assist residents and our staff to maintain social distancing within that service. We're also working out some protocols with the courthouse to help us continue to meet needs for filings of injunction petitions. In contrast to the drop-off in our hotline calls, we've seen a real flood of survivors seeking injunctions for protection starting, beginning about the middle of last week. And we think that's because, again, survivors are seeing this as a window when they can do something to secure the safety of their own living environment against abusers moving back into residences with them, which then of course create the circumstances that I described at the beginning of our remarks. So again, I know for all of us on this session, we're each dealing with different populations, again, different kinds of vulnerabilities, different kinds of services, connection disruptions that will happen during these times. And I just hope that we can keep in touch to share what we're coming up with by way of additional strategies. In our case, we want, we really want to work with our public safety community to see if there are additional ways that we can provide the basic safety protections for victims who are at home alone and in need of contact. Thanks.
Thank you, Meg, I really appreciate it. And the sake of time, I'm going to spare a couple of other questions that we had. But I will say that we are planning on having future town hall meetings so that we can have this dialogue within the sector. I'm looking forward to partnering with some of our other community nonprofit organizations as well so we can continue the dialogue. But again, the sake of time, I'm going to transition to Q and A and afford all of the participants an opportunity to ask questions. Please submit your questions in the chat or comment box. And then either myself, Rebecca, we will try to monitor those questions. And actually Rebecca has, Rebecca here, Stuart, happens to be our program and membership director with Annie, and she will actually ask those questions. As you are thinking of your questions for our panelists, if you are trying to reach a specific panelist, then I ask that you go ahead and put their name in your comment section so we know who to direct the question to. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Rebecca to see what other questions have come up for our panelists.
We have a question from Alice Lee Stansberry for Kathleen. Kathleen, I've heard from clients in Orlando about huge layoffs of arts employees. Many of these arts organizations may not survive this crisis. Do you anticipate this happening in Tallahassee?
Thank you for the question. That's true, what's happening in Orlando is also happening across the nation where there's a lot of arts workers that are being laid off. And some of those workers are also cross over to other industries that are also suffering for this. So it's a pretty intense place. Here in Tallahassee, we have a little different structure where we have a fair amount of organizations that actually don't have a building. And so they've been able probably to adapt the best, going online, continuing on their services and so on. Those with buildings are the ones that are really suffering from, and if there's layoffs and things, we're seeing it within those buildings, within those organizations. So we're trying the best we can with this, especially with this federal stimulus, to route that information to these folks so that they can try to use this for some gap funding and then work with them more on a long-term basis about what their needs are so that we can try to avoid as much as possible any kind of further disruption so that those cultural institutions can go on. So right now, that's where we're at. Depending on how long this lasts, we'll kind of see what the impact is going to be. But we're hopeful that we can help all these organizations stay afloat and come out on the other side.
Thank you. We have a question from Leslie Powell Boudreau. On DEO unemployment assistance, legal services is already getting calls from people who can't apply or who believe they will be denied. We hope to find some systematic solutions because of the sheer volume. Oh, I guess that was not a question, I apologize. We have a question from Kelly Adi. Between Annie and UPHS, is there a current advocacy strategy to move the city and county forward on providing relief for local nonprofits?
So Kelly, thank you for that question. I know I have been in contact with Amber Tyne and we've been back and forth and communicating. Amber, I believe, is also registered on the town hall meeting and participating. And so it is definitely in our both best interests that we do get together to advocate very hard to our local officials. Both organizations have created surveys of their members and I will be in contact with Amber to see if we can consolidate that information. I will tell you, from the Florida Nonprofit Alliance, they have been doing an amazing job across the entire state to advocate for funding and support of the sector. But to answer your question, conversations are being had not only with UPHS, but also United Way and the Community Foundation of North Florida.
Thank you for that answer, Felina. We have a question from Tom Taylor. How can we match all the people with more time to help nonprofits with remote and safe services? Can we each post job or volunteer descriptions in a centralized place where the willing can respond?
Yeah, that's a great question. And that may be where, again, the organizations that I had just mentioned can come together uniformly to have something like that. I know independently, we all have a COVID-19 communications page to keep our members informed. And like all of us, all of our nonprofits, we even at Annie internally are looking at crisis management techniques and strategies that we can put in place to best serve the nonprofit sector as well. So there is a lot that's being developed and that we can support one another. Internally, I will say, Annie does have for its members a COVID-19 forum that has been created so that we can exchange that dialogue of information. We have a page on our website that has job postings. And then, of course, we're very socially active on all social media platforms with job boards and things of that nature. But that's a fantastic idea, fantastic suggestion. And I think there's probably no better time to maybe put together something uniformly where we can all openly go ahead and exchange that information. So that's a fantastic question, thank you.
From Tamara Smith. Partnerships are needed more than ever. Do you have any ideas on how we can best leverage each other's resources as we address the needs of our community?
Tim, I think you're still hopefully on the line.
I can, I am.
Okay, and I'm going to, the reason I'm switching that over to Tim is because Tim, I know, has his hands and feet in multiple different services and areas. And by far, Tim, can you speak to the collaboration that you participate in? And then, yeah, if you can speak to that, that's fantastic. Because what I love to do with answering that question is show some examples of some successful collaborations and how that is already taking place.
Well, I appreciate that setup, but I don't, I think I'm going to fall way short of the goal there. We're big fans of the collaboration and the cooperation and working together that none of us can by ourselves solve the world's problems and shouldn't be expected to. And knowing that the clients that many of us work with are in the tier of the moment and have lots of different needs, and the only way we're going to be able to meet those needs is to holistically try to serve them. So I think the biggest challenge in this case is just simply going to be reaching out to your partners that you work with or reaching out and discovering new partners. This is where the, any challenge becomes, of course, an opportunity to say, hey, we do this and you do this. These two things should go hand in hand. And I think that everybody should be looking for those opportunities. One example, most recently for us, is that the Hurricane Michael Relief Package that came through Congress, which is slowly rolling out into our region, will put us in a place that we're going to be working with our surrounding counties in North Florida to work with meeting immediate needs regarding families that are still struggling. But also, we'll be looking to use these dollars to leverage them in such a way that we can hopefully get families into a sustainable pattern and lifestyle that will last beyond simply taking care of a blue tarp and putting a good roof on their house. So our collaboration efforts is immediately, when we tell, we're told we're going to get some funds, we reach out to other people immediately to say, we've got funds we think we're going to get available. How best can we spend those and together? And I think that's important. Don't protect your turf. Sit on your hands, put the money in the middle of the table and figure out how to, together you do that. So I reached out to Jim McShane and I reached out to his counterparts in Bay County and in Marianna to talk about how we collectively can work as a team in that space. So I think the opportunity is going to be the initiative that you show, reaching out to somebody else and perhaps just keeping those lines of communication open. Always make sure you return a phone call, that's the important part.
Thank you, Tim.
We have Amber Tyne, who is responding with some additional resources from UPHS. She says UPHS is working with Annie, but additionally, we are working with the city and county who specifically fund human service agencies through CHSP to not only allow for advancements of current contract funds, but to also create flexibility to fund operational costs outside of what it's currently contracted to support. So thank you, Amber, for sharing that. Additionally, for those agencies that did not apply for CHSP upcoming contract years, we are previously funded to have funding advance through December 31st. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Well, I know that we are at our time, actually a little bit over. Thank you for those who are still on the line. You can stay as long as you want as we round up and finish this up. Your questions, again, if you have questions that we were not able to address within this timeframe, please do not think that they will not be addressed. We will actually create a form, a forum for those questions to be answered. So we want to ensure that that definitely takes place. I do want to round up and finish this off with a couple of resources. Again, Amber, thank you for sharing, UPHS, Coka, all of our panelists. Again, thank you so much for your time. And again, I want to be able to make sure that all of you are equipped with information. And therefore, even with Annie, we do have a COVID-19 page that specifically gives you daily, daily updates on what's going on in terms of communication, whether it's on the national, state, even local level. All of that information can be found underneath the COVID-19 page. As well as we've launched as of yesterday, a COVID-19 funding page that will provide you with any and every grant that we can possibly get our hands on. We are dropping it underneath the COVID-19 funding page. This is an access to- This is an access to everyone in the community regardless of whether you are a member or not. So please utilize that resource to be able to look for those grants. We are very fortunate at Annie to have some amazing research students who are looking for this information and dropping it up here for our community to take advantage of national grants. So again, this is a great time to go ahead and submit those grants. I also want to make sure that you are aware that Annie is going on Instagram. We are taking our Board Recruitment Mixer online. So as a lot of you being very creative, we want to ensure that the nonprofit community can still receive those wonderful leaders in the community who want to be a part of a nonprofit in partnership with Leadership Tallahassee. We will be live on Instagram with our Board Recruitment Mixer. So if you are a nonprofit organization seeking board leadership, then we ask for you to join us on Instagram on April the 9th. Grab your cocktail, we'll have a cocktail pitcher contest going on and our own very, Rebecca Hirstewart will be performing live on our Instagram page as well. So we'll have some live music for you. Again, please follow us online at myannie.org for our page that I mentioned earlier for the latest on the COVID-19 communications and how that impacts our nonprofits. Stay tuned, we will be doing this again and everyone, please stay safe. Thank you.